Order, would you please stand and salute the flag? Thank you.
Next thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for May nine.
I will bring those to you next meeting. We don't have a scribe, so I have to do it. I didn't have time this week. I'll bring them to you next meeting.
And next our department reports.
Good evening. Shout out with the Paul Fox, Curtis Fox, and all regional allies. Went really well Sunday. Thanks for everybody that came, especially the board. Guys being there and like right in the butt of it, said, and that family was really, we should have that. So, thank you. We ended up packing in our house about two hundred people. Never thought we'd have that many people. And it opened doors and had people kind of push out. Fortunately, I knew a guy as far as the occupancy looked. All went well. So it was a nice send on. Today, we swapped out six tires on engine eighty-three to the tune of about five thousand dollars. One of our newest trucks, believe it or not, it's eight years old already. They usually say about seven years, you should be swapping tires out. Next year's budget, we'll get eighty-one after July first. Should be a little bit less on that truck. As you guys all know, what the cost and services just keep going up and up and up every year. It's not getting any cheaper. I do want to thank the taxpayers publicly for passing the fire department budget last night. Really appreciate that. Shows continued support from the town. Training this month, we're going to be doing boat operations and water rescues the next two weeks. So you'll probably see us on my pocket log and doing that. Last Saturday, speaking training, we graduated Cody Roy, my son, Ayesha Nesbit, and Junior Lieutenant Braden Almuth. Basic Fire Schoolman Turner. That's pretty proud. All freedom passed successfully. That was about a two and a half month training program. So now they're all SBA qualified and going to your boss. Junior Lieutenant can until he turns eighteen. Couple more months, he's eager, ready to go. Want a beach party? It's all ready to go. I want to thank all the sponsors that donated to this year's event. It's probably the biggest year we've had a turnout of donations and the most five hundred dollar sponsors. So you're going to see beach road, just both sides with banners this year. Might see a few extra fireworks too.
Didn't you have the beach last year?
Yes, that was a big day. Well, we're gonna have a few extra water takes this year, so that should be good. It's the one that goes into the water and it's out. Surface of water. I didn't have them last year. We'll get a few extra takes this year. Just so you guys know, next year, the beach party, I think, start April annual. Next year is the ninth or something like that. The Monmouth Firehouse Museum will be taking that over from the fire department. So we'll funnel all the funds right through to the museum. We're going to try to do solicit donations to the Firehouse Museum. This year, we just, we're not charging for the event, but we'll have a boot drive going that evening. And the donations will close that project. But going forward, we're going to do everything through the five oh one C three. So it'll be better for donations and everything too. Speaking of Firehouse Museum, ongoing renovations with Catamasters is ongoing. Amazing results already, just on the dent all over there, finding all kinds of stuff hidden in the walls. Yesterday I met with Chase and they showed me a wooden beam, the original signers from nineteen oh four. So gotta try to preserve that somehow, or maybe make a little window in the wall so that it's exposed to the museum. But that was pretty cool. You'll have to get the book here and see who it is. You know, I'll read this cursive signatures. The date was there, nineteen oh four. Hopefully this coming week, we'll have power hooked up over there at the C and P. Cody Crane just partnered with us. They're going to be donating steel I beams to help support the second floor. Just really gracious for their assistance and donation of materials, equipment, labor to get that done. We'll be seeing a big crane downtown pretty soon, probably within a week or two. We'll continue in the fundraiser. If you haven't seen it on Facebook, hit the link, donate a box of nails. Not really a box of nails, but ten bucks. Love that. See that go up a little more. We've already raised almost two thousand dollars just in the last week and a half. We have a goal of twenty-five thousand to get us to the goal, which is by September, that's complete the project. That's about what our share is going to be to finish it. Catamasters, the Magnolia Network, you know, they're donating a lot of materials and saving us a ton of money, but we still have a lot to do to finish the project. You can go on Facebook or you can go, we've got a new website, which is monmouthfirehouse.org. So you're the one that looks up. Love that donation. That's all I got. If you guys have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't like to say downtown, but it's asking, but appreciate the support that we've had over the years. Going forward. It's starting again this year where I'm going to be reminding you every meeting that August sixth is Community Night Out. Mark it on your calendar. Open for kind of turnout and fire department. Next time, what time we signing at? Four o'clock on?
No, six.
Two o'clock four.
We'll probably be fine.
We had a tour of the school kindergarten kids from school come down to PD. Went through the cruisers, got short, Dana showed them around the, around the PD. I think we had like forty, forty-five kids come down through there. Always a lot of questions and quite interesting. And the last thing I have is that the new cruiser didn't pass, which is choice of the town folk. But I have a cruiser that's offline, been offline for about a month. I didn't put any money into it, hoping that would give a new cruiser. It's gonna need about three thousand dollars worth of work to get that car back on the road. It's all the dust. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. Actually, it's gonna be all twenty-five hundred to do the work on that one. That's two thousand sixteen that has hundred and sixty-four thousand miles on it. So I was hoping not to put money into it, but it is what it is. Wanted to bring that up.
Well, we want the police cars to pass inspection.
We absolutely do. That's all I have unless you folks have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a little bit here from Tony. About the wagon road repairs are just about done, except for the paving. So now it's just working with a paving company to come out. You know, it's a small job to do this side, but they think it's done. So if you guys go down there and take a look. The, through the FEMA project, he hired a company to come in and do the, all the brush pickup. So from the storm last fall, winter, that was under the disaster declaration, they picked all that stuff up. So all the down brush and stuff should be all cleaned up at this point. If you go to the transfer station, you'll see there's two piles of wood. One of them is over here and one of them is here. The one over there is because FEMA is going to pay for that one. And this one over here, we have to keep them separated. That, that's why you'll see two piles. It's going to get shipped eventually and FEMA will reimburse us for all of the costs of the truck driving around, the wagon road repairs, all of the town time. Dan's time, the fire department's time, the truck, we get reimbursement for the truck fees for going out that day to like man power lines that were down and his, his crew, we can pay, they can reimburse us for all of his crew's time, except officers. So like if there's, yeah, well, and the officer's time, we can't, we can't claim that. It only, it can only be in line. They consider you to be a salaried employee, even though you're, it's a volunteer department. So they don't, they don't allow us to claim you or any of your officers. It's just your
Something for you.
Yeah. So we'll get a chunk of money for all this work, hopefully when we're Don Tony is very experienced dealing with FEMA, so he's been a great help working with them. And FEMA's been great so far to work, but they've left us alone because we haven't asked for more than probably what we deserve. Like I think some community is trying to get everything under the sun, but and the last thing is over the, after the Fourth of July, you're going to see them out there starting to do shoulder work and ditching, which means you'll see the grader running up and down the sides of the roads, pushing all the pile. If you look, a lot of our roads, there's a lot of sand on the side. So you're going to see them dragging that up onto the pavement. And then they will scoop it all up and they'll take it away. They're gonna, they're gonna focus out on Wilson Pond Road on the Winthrop end. Because Winthrop is having their side of town over there paved. And the contractor is willing to allow us to get onto their bid, which is two years old. So it's about, it's a very good bid price. So Tony's going to build on that and pave that end from the Winthrop side over through as far as he can, and then also try to save enough money to do town farm road. And then whatever else he can get, get done to. So just so you know, we're going to kind of build, we're going to piggyback on that bid. If you guys are all okay with it, it's going to be a way better price than we're going to be able to bid out right now. So if I can just kind of get some head nods, if that's okay, I'm going to talk to the Winthrop county manager.
He's going to go up to the point at which we might be disturbing pavement for that was the loop that goes around.
That's correct. That is correct. He's going to avoid any area that's currently in the plan for the water project. So he's going to go just as far as, as they would do anything that, yeah, so they're not digging it back up. But we figure he might as well take advantage of the good bid price. So if you're, if you're all okay with that, he's going to move forward in that. You all okay with that?
Okay. Just, just feel free to, you know, if there's any extra pavement, just do the north station parking lot. I can mention that.
They're going to be out there, you know, a lot of costs with paving is mobilization. So if Winthrop's already got them out there, it's going to save us quite a bit of money, just having them do it while they're there.
Going back to the FEMA question. What's the total amount that we're going to realize from the disaster?
We don't know yet because it's, it's a, it's kind of a, Tony hasn't given me the final spreadsheet. So everything has to be logged very specifically. So like if you move a fire truck, they need to know the make, model, year. And H one has its own rate and he hasn't done all those, all those calculations yet.
Are we talking, I mean, a hundred grand?
It'll be, it'll be, it'll be less of that. I bet it'll be thirty or forty thousand probably. Is my guess, because we were able to use the gravel from our own pit for the wagon road. So you can't really, there's not a lot of cost involved in that. Can't charge the same rate when it's our own dirt, basically. Maybe something like that, but I mean, it'll be good. We'll get all this stuff done and we won't have to pay for it.
And done in a way that doesn't fall apart the next time it
Right, exactly. Well, they have standards too, but I think Tony's standards are probably higher than even what FEMA wants at this point. He's very, he, he, he wants everything done right. So.
It's, I think that'll be good.
The, the audit is completely done at this point. I need, my day tomorrow will be spending my time responding to some of the management findings, which are in there, which are basic findings that our staff is too small to delegate duties, you know, far enough apart. But I have to, I have to make responses to all of these things. And once that's done, it's been reviewed and everything. So I assume that you guys will have a matter of weeks at this point. As soon as I can get this done and submit it to them, I think you'll get it back.
So potentially a presentation in our next meeting?
I'm hopeful, hopeful, or maybe the one after.
Yep. This is the order for what years?
Twenty, it's the fiscal year twenty-two or two years behind. I think that's it for now, in total, unless you have any questions.
I have a question. Has the announcement from the resiliency grant folks been made?
No, but everybody seems to know about it. So if you want to, if you want to let the cat out of the bag, you're welcome to do something.
So do we know an amount that we have been awarded?
It was the, it was the full amount. Yep.
So it's a fifty thousand dollar, we've been awarded a fifty thousand dollar grant that we applied for to study the feasibility of improving the Anabaskook Lake Dam so that the water can be released at a greater, at a faster rate. A rate that's commensurate with other dams in the, in the watershed, because that seems to be the log jam, so to speak. And has caused a lot of flooding around the Anabaskook Lake. So we've got fifty thousand dollars. We didn't really want to put a whole lot of money into designing something without knowing exactly how long the existing dam is gonna last. So this is sort of a top to bottom review of that dam to ensure that it's worth making a significant investment in before we move forward with, you know, some, some ideas on how to modify the dam so that it can release water if we get these five inch rainstorms. And presumably have a better, have a positive effect on places like the wagon road where the water clears way more quickly, rather than flooding and causing problems. Or the wagon bridge that is closed, you know, for weeks on end because the water's too high in Anabaskook. And we just can't get the boards out.
Just wait till the bridge gets replaced, you know, if you're saying full year.
Okay. Well, you know what? If they're going to raise the bridge, I'm okay with that.
Six inches.
That's it?
I asked for higher and they might stretch it to
Okay.
Still don't think it's going to be enough for
Can we, can we advocate for anything?
Tried, tried, I tried to get the rescue boat to be able to go under the bridge, both sides. Didn't seem to any, any, they said it's too costly. The more you raise it, the more they have to go out. It's just more money for ramps.
Well, maybe, maybe we think about solving the problem another way and talking to the damn people about lowering the level of the lake permanently. By twelve inches. When they did more in a cook dam, they lowered it by six inches. So we'll see.
You're gonna buy me an extra dock to go.
No, you get more yard, you get more yard.
More grass to mow.
Tony went down there yesterday and met with Wendy
Oh, yeah.
About that. So I, I don't know what the decision was, but he, he didn't hear that the lake was too low. So he
You have a vote on the lift.
Yeah. So he didn't go down. Just to let you know, I just want you to know that he did go down there yesterday and he talked to her about what, what it should be. So I don't know. I didn't hear about whether he did anything, but I don't know. But he did hear the complaint, so he knew.
Was it from us though?
No, no, I know. Somebody did. So it wasn't just you. Yeah, sure.
So that's it.
Sorry.
No one. Good news.
Next is slide board reports. Next is public comment.
I'm going to reiterate this, I'm always fighting for that. That was really appreciated. Fox's celebration life, that really meant a lot to a lot of people, not just the family, especially the really can't say I appreciate you guys. The presence was greatly appreciated. Thank you.
I'm sorry I couldn't get there, but what's going on?
Well, I said of all nine clubs.
You had a graduation thing going on, didn't you?
Yeah.
Got a good excuse.
Diana Kalenda, North Monmouth. At the last, in the meeting at the twenty-ninth, we talked about the beach program. And, you know, it was advised that if we voted down twelve and voted up Article thirty-four, that you would go ahead and run the beach program at the previous year's budget. Is that your plan, given the outcome of the?
We haven't talked about anything.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't had to. This, this will be the, the chance that they'll have to discuss it tonight. So I, I can't answer your question a, a, at this, at this moment.
And also I want to make sure that you all got my email with the petition that had three hundred and thirty-seven signatures on it supporting Lisa.
Yes.
So I brought an extra one in case you were unable to read.
Anything else? Yes.
I just, I just wanted to first say thank you because I, I felt like, you know, leading up to that May twenty-ninth meeting, you know, you all as selectmen and Justin were really responsive and really fast in terms of the questions that were coming around. So I just wanted to, I appreciate that and the service that you're doing. I also came just because I saw the results and I was personally pleased because I was hoping that we would have the opportunity to talk more about the beach, you know, and see what the town's response was. And the way I read that vote was that there was a support of, you know, a higher level budget to maintain some of the programming that we've had in the past, and particularly the lifeguards and the swim lessons that we've had in the past. So I just wanted to come here tonight to share that, but also to say that I am looking forward to hearing what that plan will be and having, you know, continuing that open communication so that we understand how this, you know, really successful program at our beach is going to be staffed this summer and next summer, or at what point we will be able to know. Cause I know there are personnel issues going on and I just really, you know, appreciate attention, you know, sharing, you know, my opinion as a resident, saying this is important. I want the attention to go to that to the degree that it's possible and useful this summer.
Coming on the meeting wagon from the twenty-ninth and rolling over, same topic. I personally, because people know I went to the meeting, they know my feelings on the beach, they know where I live. I've been feeling emails and calls asking me, I knew what was going to happen. No, I don't come and ask that question. Ask me if I know when the lifeguard will be there, when it'll be open, what's going to happen? Don't know. School's out on Friday. I'm hoping that you can come up with a solution quickly to get things going. Because it's, it's getting busy and crazy down there. I think my takeaway from the way the vote went, people talking, not only socially, people, I can't tell you the number of softball meetings in public places, people have come up to me and talked about this in the last month. Being very upset about how it got to us this point, because it's that important. And I guess, and I wrote down notes from two weeks ago, I never had a chance to talk. Mr. Phillips was, he was awesome. He was really didn't give a lot of time. I, I feel like there's a disconnect. And I look at you guys and I thank you for your service, but I also realize that by and far this panel has the time to put into the town. The people who are using that beach, we don't have the time to make this happen tonight. Quinn's team lost last night, so we didn't have to go to a game somewhere tonight. So I can move up dinner, be here. The people who are using that beach, they're not tuned in. Unfortunately, we did not know this was coming until we found out and then we set our hair on fire. Okay. And, and something that's incredibly important to our families as part of our summers has got ripped out and it became an emotional reaction. I think you might all agree with that. And a lot of you had talked about your past, your great memories and your kids or your grandkids and all that. We're talking about the present and the present is Friday. Actually, it's been the last few weeks, but Friday, every one of those kids over there has an early release and they're going to hit that beach. And I don't think there's a plan for lifeguards. And as a mom, that bothers me. I mean, I, I read today, somebody wants to have a birthday party this weekend and it was not a plan. It's come to discussion about it. I'd call the town office. I don't, you know, people don't know what's said. It bothers me that disconnect and the lack of planning, because I do believe that circumstances that brought this have been known for months. And that bothers me. That here we are in rolling around the end of June and there's not a plan there. So I want to see if we can I'm hoping that the solution's figured out and going forward, there's a way to not have something this happen again. I feel like it's danger who, I think Doug is the only one, but I think he went through like something like seven years ago when there was something similar that happened. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I can, before we move on, I can say that, yes, we have a, a pending personnel appeal thing that prevents us from saying anything specific. And so we've been quiet because if we were to say what's on our mind, there's the potential for violating employee privacy. And we want to be Monmouth, the town of Monmouth wants to be an excellent employer. And we also want to be absolutely positively sure that whatever programs we are offering the public are safe. That's simple. So I can't say anything more about the pending decisions that this board has to make. We are going into it with eyes wide open and I can't think of any person around this table that doesn't care about the safety of children.
Mr. Paul.
I have a question about the statement you just made about our programs being safe and you guys wanting to make sure. Is there an issue in the past with the programs being safe? Because to everyone's knowledge, it's been involved in the program, there's never been an issue.
I don't think we could say.
I don't think we can say.
But that statement made said enough that if you're saying there was an issue with safety in previous programming.
We are taught, not talking about the past, we're talking about the path forward.
But you just talked about the past.
We want, know what I said. I will say it one more time. We're being recorded for the public record.
Okay.
I think everyone in this room wants to see that whatever this town does, that we offer a program that is safe for children. Very simple.
I was going to say, if you don't discuss it at this meeting about the plan for starting up the beach program, when would you? Because you can't meet other than meeting.
Can I, can I just speak in? Yeah. So the vote happened. We got the vote tallies last night. It was about eleven o'clock at night.
Right.
I'm sorry that we have not had the opportunity. This was not on the agenda for tonight. I have not had the opportunity to have a discussion with anybody here, any staff. I can't make a plan from eleven o'clock last night until six o'clock this afternoon.
At the next select board meeting then?
Potentially, but like some of this stuff, like the lifeguards have been posted for over a month and nobody's applied. So there, those, those jobs are available. If you know anybody that wants to be a lifeguard.
The lifeguard, they are willing to
That's why we used to train our own children, our students to be lifeguards.
I have heard that, but I'm, but I'm telling you, those jobs are available right now and have been for a month.
Is it possible for people who aren't lifeguarding are waiting to see what's going to happen with?
That is possible. I have, I have no idea. But I'm just, right, I'm just trying to say like what I know. But I can't, it, it's unreasonable to think that, that this board has a, has a plan from eleven o'clock last night to right now.
I apologize.
We can't meet in public. So we, I mean, we have to meet in public is what I mean, is what I meant to say. So they can't decide things. And if there's no agenda item, there's no action for them to take tonight on this. They can't. They don't, there's no published item on the agenda for them to take action on. So we will, they will be happy. We will all be happy to listen to your comments and I'm happy to listen to them. And we can take them into effect. And if they would like to have an agenda item put on some future meeting, they can do that, but they can't do anything tonight. They can't take action on an item that wasn't published for the public.
You can't ask them to have that as an agenda item today?
No, they can't because it wasn't, it wasn't noticed to the public before tonight.
Like I'm concerned like she is. I mean, on Friday afternoon, there could be, you know, if, if it's a nice day, I didn't look at the weather, but you know, and the, the lessons typically start. And I think another week typically, and so it's going to put things off for two or three
No, I understand your concern. I'm just saying, but they can't.
It's a disappointment to children in town.
They can't act on an unpublished agenda item. They don't do that. Like, all of their agendas have to be, are always posted the week before, usually on the Thursday afternoon, sometimes Friday, when I can't get them put together because I can't find the documents that they need to make decisions. But they're always the weekend, they're always before the weekend before their meeting. So that, so that the residents know what they're going to talk about. It's unfair for them to just bring up topics ad hoc and do them because if anybody's interested in them, they don't have the ability to come and comment on them.
Don't confuse, regardless of how the vote went, if it went up or down, you'd still have to decide what you're going to do. I mean, maybe it should have been on this meeting regardless of the vote. I mean, if the, it's supposed to start like in a week. It seems like you're.
Seems to me like the town manager has done what he is capable of doing at this point, based on the information that he's had at this point. The voters of Monmouth have very clearly spoken that they did not want to follow our recommendations on that ballot. So at our next available meeting, we will have a discussion that will be publicly posted. I hear your concerns. There might be something that we could do if someone wanted to apply for one of the lifeguard jobs. There might be something that we could do in the meantime. But at this point, we have, we're here to listen, we're here to accept applications for lifeguards. If no one is coming forward, I don't know, would any of you like to be a lifeguard? Because we're looking for lifeguards.
There's zero lifeguards staff. I mean, zero.
We have, for a month, the lifeguards have been invited to apply and none have.
None have applied.
There you go. So if anyone knows any lifeguards that would be interested in applying, they can give an application to the town manager, to Lori.
Lori's the one, Lori, but the town office.
Yeah, me or Lori, whatever. Yeah. There you go. I'm the kind of one saying.
I guess my, again, I think I'm bouncing up here and here and what you're saying, my frustration is, and you say you just found this out and you have only a couple days and they came up on the agenda. This was discussed last fall. One of those meetings I came to because it's my concern about having out-of-town people come, it was brought up, and I think Chris is the one that said that at some point, we're going to need to discuss what we're going to do with the waterfront director position. We've, and we're not going to, I mean, it's been in the public with the issue, with the employee issue. But it's not like it was news, there might be a problem having a waterfront director since last September. I guess that's where my, why, why wait until May when most, I mean, most of those lessons in planning or events that happen are planned by parents in January, February, March. Hiring happens in April. And here we are, so the school getting out. And, you know, I'm beating a dead horse here, but I feel like it needs to be said out loud.
You've asked a question, I'll give you an answer. We can't answer the question about why we had to wait until, without violating employee privacy. So unfortunately, we cannot answer that question without putting the town at substantial risk for violating someone's, some employee's privacy.
And there was no opportunity to have a backup plan of what are we going to do if this doesn't work out?
Yes. Gordon.
Mr. London. This ain't nothing new. This is a problem, not only with the public, but with the school. Schools had to cancel trips down there, right into town, back to school. Why'd they have to cancel their trip down there that they've been doing for, ever since my kids have been in elementary school? We're talking for a second, third grade.
I met with the.
That's on you because you're in charge.
I met with, I have met with both of the principals at the consolidated school about the bike ride issue. And they had no issue about that, you know, the bike ride. Okay, no, no, I'm just telling you, that's the only time that they have, that they have contacted me about anything. And they had no concerns about there not being lifeguards down there for that particular issue. Other than that, neither one of them has contacted me. I know who both of them are. I've had conversations with them. I think they feel comfortable talking to me. So I'm really unaware of what you're referring to.
First and second grade of the town beach, they canceled.
Okay, I'm unaware of that. If they don't contact me and don't talk to me, then I don't know what to tell them.
Obviously, this is a problem. So what are we going to do going forward?
You?
Correct me if I'm wrong, are people missing on this Freedom of Information Act? Very much involved here, but these people keep asking, what part of, can't tell you if you understand it. Am I correct that the Freedom of Information Act requires us to be quiet?
Well, the Employment Act is what's requiring me to say very little. So like, I get to sit and, you know, we all have to sit here and have, you know, whatever, people can say whatever they want about us, but we can't respond. But that, but that's, that's the way it should be for the employees of the town. Like, that's the burden that we bear in this, in these positions. And I'm okay with that. So. Justin and I have had two, three, four conversations. I've been into his office and every time I'm in there, we have a discussion about this. But that's as far as the discussion can go until things are resolved.
I understand. I think we all need to hear that, that we can't discuss it.
We talk about it a lot. Somebody waiting to come in?
Yes.
Thanks. I look in the wrong direction.
Then there's Chris Bryant puts his hand up.
You want to call on Chris Bryant, Doug? He's got his hand up. Chris Bryant on Zoom?
Hi, Doug. Yeah, this is Chris Bryant. Thanks. I just had a question about at the waterfront, will you be putting docks in or putting the ropes out or anything like that if you don't have lifeguards? It seems like even, at least the ropes should be out to designate a swimming area to make sure that boats don't encroach where kids may be swimming, even if their parents are just watching them?
That's a good suggestion. We have been talking about whether, our thought is that we can't find any lifeguards that the float should probably not be put in because it encourages kids to dive and things like that. And if there's nobody watching those, that doesn't seem safe. But I appreciate your suggestion about the ropes. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks.
And this is just falling on in terms of the hiring. I mean, this is maybe gratuitous and you know how to hire people. But I do think that having a job posted on the Monmouth website and not doing outward recruiting and networking and talking to people in different places to find the lifeguards is not going to be particularly successful. Certainly towns, people like us can do our best to try to share those job opportunities with people. But I just hope, I guess I would just hope that the kind of work that is being done on hiring is more proactive than a job waiting for somebody to come to the Monmouth website.
I can tell you, I'm aware of at least two of the members of the board that have been working the network.
Great, great. Thanks.
Yes. Weren't there seventeen lifeguards last year?
That's what we heard at the last meeting.
Yeah. They didn't reapply?
I don't know. I don't know.
I think there's a loyalty to that situation there, but I have something to say about hiring. So you can say that there's been no applicants. It might be in part to the fact that the job posting descriptions for one job in particular has changed at least six times since it was posted. I was in fact called in for a meeting regarding my son by our human resource department because you guys decided to change the age requirement in job descriptions and therefore disqualified him. So maybe if we weren't changing job descriptions over and over and over again, there might be some influx.
Notice.
A question. After, at the last meeting, this was discussed for about an hour. You expected it to be come up, coming up again today. Couldn't a, on the agenda, couldn't have been put on discussion of level of funding for beach program? Would that have been somehow illegal? And number two, can an employee waive their right to privacy and asking that everything be spoke in the open? Two questions. So could it, could you have put it on level of funding for beach program and it been discussed? That simply say, we're going to fund it at this level or this level?
Sure, absolutely. If somebody had, if somebody suggested it for the agenda or that they had. Sure, yeah, I can't deny that.
So there's something lacking that that wasn't put on the agenda. Let me just say, if that was on the agenda and you said someone made a motion to fund, because of the vote, we're going to fund it last year's program, everyone wrote, and kind of ended discussion, we know we move forward with this, but it wasn't done. So that was, I think, a mistake. Number two, can an employee waive their right to privacy and have everything discussed in the open because they have, they feel they have nothing to hide and want everyone to know everything? Is that possible?
Yes.
Yes.
I think everyone that was in attendance at the last vote was under the assumption, when it was asked to the board, that if you guys are going to fund the beach at last year's level, if this was voted down, I think we all kind of took it at face value that you guys said that that's how it would go.
If there's no employees, pay, we can have all the funding in the world, but if we don't get applicants for the jobs, then there's no money to be spent.
Right. Yeah.
Yes.
If, is everyone through talking this, I want to move on to a different topic. Does anyone have?
I have something, but it's a different topic.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Well, I'd like to make a few comments about the vote that came out yesterday. I guess you could say it was a historic vote, the twelve articles voted down. It's been a long time since anyone, anything like that happened. And I kind of follow the history of voting in this town. And you have to go back twenty years ago when anything like this occurred. And I think it's good to look back to see where we were, where we are now and where we're going. So in two thousand and three, about twenty years ago, the selectman recommended two point one million for a police, fire and rescue building. That was voted down, five oh eight no's to one oh one yes. At the same time, they asked, this is two thousand and three, they voted, they wanted two hundred thousand for a salt sand shed. That was voted down, three forty-six to two eighty-six. They also wanted a public works garage for another two hundred thousand. That was voted down, four oh three to two thirty-five. So that was two thousand and three. So what did the selectman do the next year? That was by a referendum vote. We were back at regular town meetings the next day. We had the other voting, but they had it done by referendum. And they had more proposals for two thousand and four. And someone from the public works department had suggested that we shouldn't go to open, you know, the meeting where you vote by raise a hand. And we go that way rather than referendum vote. So it went to a, a public meeting where everyone there and there, a large crowd showed up, three hundred and eighty-six people. So in two thousand and four, they came back and wanted a salt and sand shed for three hundred and fifteen thousand, public works building for eight hundred and fifteen thousand, and a police department for two hundred thousand. So we went to the meeting where it was by raise of hands voting for it, and a motion was made to table those indefinitely. And the people voted them down by a very large margin. And I looked, you know, twenty years later, we could have spent millions of dollars on police, fire, rescue, salt, sand, public works garages, and we didn't do any of that. But for the past twenty years, from when I can gather, you know, what you'll see, the police, fire, rescue, the rescue team moved up, moved over to Winthrop, the police took over the rescue building, and the fire department seems to have operated quite well in what they have. So we could have spent those millions of dollars, but twenty years later, we really didn't have to. So I think if you look back on that, you know, people in this town just don't like buildings. And when you look at the votes on, if you really want to like look into why are people voting in the current vote, they seem to like to vote for people. And as an example, the article number three, which was to vote for seniors who are low income, very low income, can get a tax relief, that had the least amount of no's. It had only a hundred and fifty-five no's. So people in this town seems to care about people, not buildings. In regard to the salt and sand shed, we've gone twenty years now, the sand has been out there, it's worked. You know, it seems to have worked fine. We have an old salt building, and I understand they want to go to more salt, using more salt. My recommendation would be to find the least expensive way to store the salt. Not this big seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar thing, but I'd be willing that if they came up with said, this is, we've now come up with the least effective way to store the salt.
Least effective.
Least expensive or least, yeah. I would support that. I think that would be a good idea. But I like, that's what I like to hear, that instead of hundreds of thousands, maybe ten to twenty thousand, they came up with some kind of, you know, people can put their heads together and come up with good ideas for that. As far as the academy, you know, I hope at this point, you've got the word that people don't want to spend tax dollars on anymore. And I'm hoping that you're looking at stopping, if there's still money left, that they look at stop spending that. My recommendation is that they perhaps give the group that are planning to, the committee, that they maybe have a year to come up with some kind of funding. And if they don't do that, that we look to perhaps selling the building. I was just thinking about it, what could, what could happen with it? There are many uses. Perhaps a hospital might want to come in and take it over. They have a lot of money to develop, maybe a hospice, maybe a daycare, maybe an alternative school like we have on the street, but someone might be able to put it to good use. Finally, I just want to say, at the last meeting, there was talks about people need to be better informed. And if you look through the voting, there's a few things that people voted no on that maybe they didn't understand. But for the most part, they, the money things, they seem to vote down. So what I would suggest that you consider moving forward is that when it comes out to voting on the budget, the care of two meetings. One would be when you're putting together each article with people that get to say, could you spend a little more, a little less? And you, and then when you develop the articles, come back and have another meeting. People say, well, what's this all about? And then they decide how they're going to vote. And so two meetings. I'd also, I've been asking about this for years, you know, twenty years ago, we used to have a budget committee in town. And budget committee worked alongside with the select committee. And they would make recommendations of their own on budget articles. So that when people went to vote, they would see the selectman recommendation, the budget committee recommendation, more people involved, more information, more minds trying to put together. I think that would be helpful for getting people out with the right information. Also, I'd like to see on the warrant articles is that I'd like to see, is it five and O on each vote, three and two, and same thing for a budget committee? They could be five and O, three and one, four and one, whatever I think. Finally, at the, at the last meeting, there was talk about getting on, you getting the word out through social media. And it was meant, one member that said that you don't want to use social media, media to get information out to people. And we're not going to be fed, you don't want to feed people with a spoon, all this stuff, all the information. So I would say, how has that worked for you? You know, there's been, there's so little information going out. The KJ is about non-existent. They used to be here at every meeting, you know. They'd come in and do a full report. They're non-existent. With the advertisers is not around. So I think the selectman perhaps could come up with a Facebook page themselves that put out some information about what's going on. People could come back and forth on. So I'll leave it at that, that I think you need to do more to get the word out to people. And I think it'll make voting more informative in the future. Thank you.
We have meetings all winter long on budget issues. So every meeting in the winter, we're discussing a part of the budget. And then we have public hearings. People don't come. People don't come to those meetings when we're discussing the budget. I, it's, you know, also they could be online and zoom in. So, and of course, I write, every meeting, I write what happened at the meeting and put it on, not just Facebook, well, only Facebook now because the community advertiser doesn't exist anymore. But plenty of opportunity for people to be involved and know what's going on. Alson?
I'm jumping off of him. It's actually on my little list of things I want to talk about. I have a line under beach and it says, communication with your constituents. And he said, brought up some of the points and the spoon fed comment in Facebook. So Doug, the problem is, if you do the math, we have four thousand people. How many of those people in this town are kids, parents, six o'clock meetings? I just said about having dinner. I would love. I would love to even come to these meetings and be part of this process.
There's just zoom up there.
I can't do a zoom any more than I can be here. I have two kids to feed or go to a game.
Watch a video after the fact.
I can check them out later and I can try to scroll through and find what you talked about in two hours thing. If I know it's something really big.
Read our minutes?
I do. When Doug gets one, I read the minutes, going and finding. However, I, and I, I'm hoping that other people agree me. I, I both loathe and love social media. If I have a few minutes to get on Facebook and check my, my feed and see whose message should be. If it comes up and I see something's going on, it's like the modern newspaper that gets sent directly to me by what I'm interested in. All the groups I am involved with, the PTO, the library, the school, there are PR methods that send directly to us. And they're actually required in the live room. To get the information out there to people. And I, again, when I look back and I look at that February seventh budget meeting about it said. It was, didn't see anything with the beach. You said parks recreation. I was in Florida. I'm not checking in. On what's going to go on that Wednesday. I don't remember Wednesday to Wednesday, most of the time what I'm doing. The car ride in with my kids. I go, hey, who's going where? Okay, this, what am I making for dinner? I'm lucky if I can function and get my laundry and dishes done. My head blew up when I found out about the beach. A lot of people did. We would like to know. That's where that disconnect is. We need that information. Unfortunately, in the modern day where we live. With two parents doing all they can to pay the bills, pay the taxes, get their kids where they're gonna go, or drive the cars, all of that stuff. It's not necessarily that, I mean, there's people who just don't care, but there are people who care who just can't be part of the process and we need help with it. We need to have that put out there and a lot of. Entities out there is now even a requirement.
I don't know how you, how to solve that kind of a problem. The, the print media is in. Uh, decline. I mean, Steve mentions the community advertiser and the KJ being at our meetings, but they. They can't afford to come. Uh, there just aren't people available. Uh. Just hard to get the information out. It's, I don't know how.
It's hard to set it up initially. Once it's set up, it's not hard. It's a click to get the information out.
So, so uh, I'm, I'm curious though. We are already posting to Facebook a summary of our meeting. We're posting to the website.
Setting up what's going to be on the agenda, what the meeting is going to be about. You have to go to your page and then scroll to dropdowns. It's, it's not the easiest to navigate, but then it's like, I don't, I honestly, I don't think about it. I, I wouldn't think about it, but if it's brought up in front of me on Facebook.
So you're asking for us to post the upcoming agenda for every meeting on Facebook?
Yeah.
Okay, that's easy, isn't it?
I know.
You.
I just want to say that. Another relative in the state, I go to their homes and I see other ways that they receive things. Mom was probably in one of the most informed communities I know of. You got like the bat signal out there. Everybody seeing that. We've been reading it for years until recently. The advertiser did exist and you were getting into there every week, all the time. We've been ultra-informed for years and you are to be. Supersomically committed for, because I've never seen coverage like that anywhere else in the state. As far as an individual. Doing that on their own time, out of their own gracious effort. So. That blows those comments out of the water. I've never seen coverage like that anywhere else, but thank you for that. Forever.
Thank you. We're, we're walking a really fine line with that too, because when you have a meeting. There's supposed to be one public record of that meeting, which is the minutes from the meeting. So if I start. Posting stuff, this is going to happen. This is what happened. This is what may be happening. And there's something in there that's not accurate. Um, we're in a lot of trouble. Um, and Doug is taking a little risk. I mean, he takes notes and is tries to be as thorough as he can, but if there's a mistake in there and someone takes it as gospel. The really only true record of the meeting is the minutes, um, or the minute if you watch it on Zoom.
You've been great tricky to get.
I, I, I also think it's important to recognize that until. Geez, I think it was COVID. Um. But, you know. There were, there was half as much connectivity. Like the, you know, did we even go to Facebook prior to COVID? Did we use Zoom prior to COVID? Did we post videos to the website prior to COVID? So we're talking about. You know, a, from three years ago, a very substantial improvement in transparency. Um, although I, I do have to say, I, I, this is a very constructive. Uh, conversation and if, if you're, what I'm hearing you say is that posting an agenda. You know, when the packets go out. Seems like it's a couple of extra clicks to go post it to our Facebook page to say. Select board meeting on Tuesday, a week from today. Here's the agenda.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
There's the false information already.
Take it back.
I was gonna say that I'm retired now, but I was technology director as my career. And um, I know, I hear what you're saying. You do so much and, and that is commendable, but it's not really working in many cases. I mean, look at. Some of the articles that failed the debt service and even the beach ordinance. I was surprised that that failed. Um, maybe MMA might be helpful to know about some of the ways that you could be sharing that. You know, to be sure that you were legal, but wonder if there would have been a post, one article at a time before. It was uh, written. It was the first draft of an article. We're trying to get some feedback and somebody said on the ordinance. Maybe there's a line in that ordinance that they didn't like. I don't know why people voted against the ordinance. It was closed, but. And even the debt service, it must be that they don't understand that question. So if you had one article a week or whatever, this is article. You know, something like the salt shed. Maybe somebody would say. What about, I talked to so and so, what about if we built something like this? I don't know, like maybe townspeople would have. Some ideas or be able to give you some of the reasons why they're against this. Maybe it's a, a statement in that beach ordinance that somebody didn't like. Um, that maybe could have been modified to. Please, I don't know. I don't know the reason because we, you know, I wish people went out. I wish I went to the meetings, but I don't go to the meetings. I'm not around in the winter. And um, but I would read them on, and I would be glad to discuss an article. A week if it was legal and if MMA advised you, and I wouldn't be surprised if towns or more towns are doing something like this because. The traditional ways of communicating are no longer working for people, whereas the social media. Is working for people.
Yes, I just want to add what I, I thought it was an interesting example of the power of social media. Uh, after I think I met with a few select people at Mayfair. I asked about what the tax increases were going to be. And then I went to Justin, who very clearly explained it to me. Uh, I went back, took the figures down. We went back and forth a few times on email and I got. He said, yes, those are accurate figures and probably took me fifteen minutes. Put down what the tax increases that re- recommend people go to vote and what the tax increases. I thought it was very important that people know. What is it going to cost me? That, I mean, that, that's bottom line. So about fifty minutes to write that up and about, you know. Cop, copying and paste and put it on all the local things and. I think you kind of understand the impact that had on this recent vote. So that's where I think you, you got to be part of that uh, to get information out to people.
I, I was, I was in his office all the time saying. It, it, you know, uh. So I can put in my notes. How much is going to cost the taxpayer? And it, it's like, uh. I don't know.
Doug, I should add, and I put one other click on W, uh, cut, cut, cut and paste on WGME. And we know the, the TV station.
Oh, yeah.
And we know the result of that. But I mean, that's how, that's how fast. That information can go and it doesn't take much to do it. And I, I just hope in the future you, you work more on getting information out so everyone, everyone knows.
It's good to see the room full of people tonight because that's what we need. We need people to come to these meetings. And be a part of the process and help us along because we're just trying to do what we think we should do. And if there's no input from people, then. We're just guessing and it's like, well, and neither people will say yes or no. And. A bunch of them said no, so now we know. But it's helpful to have people through the process. Sure. And I mean, even the regular meetings to get people in, public comment, what do you see that's going on? What can we do? What do we need to change? Um, we're here to make, you know, we all want this town to thrive and do well and. Serve the people. That's why we're here.
Drive it out to one other, oh, drive it out to Carabassin Valley every weekend, every other weekend.
I'll zoom that. I catch you on Zoom.
I just have one other thought related to that, which is I just so appreciate you saying that and I, and I wonder if there would be a way. To share that sentiment. I know we don't have an advertiser, but to share that with. You know, if, if sometimes it's just that nudge. Like now I hope to be more engaged because I haven't been, right? But if the. And I can try to share with my friends like, oh, whatever. But like if they heard from the select board, we really want you there. That will matter and they'll listen and they'll come, I hope. You know, but so that I appreciate what you.
But Mary.
How far in advance is the agenda put on the town website, on the calendar? I mean, that's where I go. I print it before I come to a meeting.
Sure.
It's usually sometime Thursday afternoon, because that's. It's usually sometimes Thursday afternoon, the week before. It's about, it's about, it's a little less than a week, but yeah, it's about a week.
And the budget schedules posted well ahead of time too.
Posted like January. Once every meeting basically from February through April.
The budget schedule's on there. Each week, what's going to, which department's going to be discussed and talked about, that's on there in January. So. It's plotted out well ahead of time and we know what we're going to be discussing and we get spreadsheets to go by. And that's always part of the package as well that you can look at ahead of time.
Yeah, I was just going to mention you have a new feature on your website and it's a text, you know, and you can sign up for texts. I signed up for it a long time ago and I've never received one. It could be something that, a simple text message, you know, meeting tonight, we're going to be, or something. I don't know, just like a now and then throw out a text message. I, I imagine a lot of people have signed up.
I, I think, uh. So not in functioning yet, right?
So. The text messaging system functions, but we're, we're sort of trying to start it slow. I've been, I've worked in other communities where. When you send too many out, people start turning them off because they don't want to get every agenda for the planning board, but then. You know, you end up getting four or five a week and then people like, I don't want to be part of this thing. So. It's sort of a fine, like, we haven't used it yet. You're completely correct. We're sort of trying to see. I haven't really figured out, you know. I'm still trying to feel it out with staff about like, and the board, like what is it that we should be bugging people about? Um.
But it could come from you too, and then they'd be off the hook legally. You could be saying, you know, thanks for coming out and voting. We're working on, you know.
Sure, I can do it, but I mean, but I've gotten them from, from communities I've lived in and I've gotten tired of them and I've unsubscribed because, because it's too much. So there's like, sort of like a balance of what should be. Sent out and, and once you kind of roll that out, it's like, you know, should. Should Chief Roy be able to send out stuff every time there's a, there's a fire on some corner or there's a medical incident or whatever?
You want to do it, yeah.
So it's just sort of working out those policies about like, what is the appropriate use? And I, it's been used differently in different communities. Some use it very heavily, but. The communities that are, are very heavy on the social media and the texting and stuff, they usually have a full-time communications director, like the city of Augusta is very good. They make nice graphics. And they put all kinds of stuff on Facebook, videos of public works, digging holes and all this stuff, but they, they pay somebody to go out and take the videos and. Respond to the people that respond to them. We don't allow comments on the town website because I don't, I, I, not on the website, but on the Facebook page, because. There's nobody to monitor those questions. So it's like you send something in and certain people expect a response. There's nobody responding. I'm not watching that on Sunday. I mean, there's no offense, but I'm not. Somebody making complaint that some trees down on some street, there's, there's, Public Works is not chimed in. To that, there's nobody watching it. Like you need to call either the town office or one of the official members because we don't have the, we're a small community. We don't have the staff to watch every. You know, every communication method twenty-four hours a day and it leads people to think they're going to get a response when they're not. And then they get angry and they call the next day and they're more mad than they were.
But you might want to try once a week or something because people, I imagine probably everybody in this room signed up and then never got anything.
Sure.
You know, something like, you know, thanks for turning out to vote. We had a good turnout or. An important meeting tomorrow night. I hope you can attend, not overboard, and I wouldn't let anybody else. Do it because then it could go out of control, but you know, I don't know. It's just another way. I think you have to get. Creative with the way, because maybe, you know, it's not working the way it always has been and we have to always be thinking.
Yeah, absolutely. I hear your feedback. I, I appreciate it, yeah.
Yeah.
Let me address your comment to Steve. Okay. Um, regarding the public safety building being turned down. I just want to go on the record and answer him that uh. I understand about public safety building, it seems to be a big elephant in the town that it could be very costly and maybe back in two thousand and three. It was three million dollars. It's before my time. I started in two thousand and five. Certainly a public safety building today's dollars would probably be triple that. Um. The whole purpose of the feasibility study was to see what our needs are in town, whether we need a public safety building. Certainly if we would have got to the table and, and had these discussions, we might have found it's not needed. Maybe we just need a new fire station. Um. Maybe we need to combine the two fire stations and save some money because I'll tell you, we're in two aging buildings. That are cinder block buildings that are leaking, difficult to heat. Outgrown our center station. OSHA rule passes in the next month. It's been extended to July twenty second. If that passes. I'm going to tell you right now, we may have to close our doors because our building's not safe for our firefighters. Based on the twenty-two new standards that are going to be implemented with the OSHA rule. So this is not going to end just, you know, with this, this election. It's probably going to come up again next year and I'll. Probably get more involved and more public to maybe suggest. Just replacing the fire stations, uh, not making a public safety bill, maybe shrink it down a little bit, you know, so it's not so costly to the town. But we've been in this building since nineteen sixty-two. It's sixty-two years old and it's not getting any better, you know, structurally. And we've outgrown it. And when you make a comment about, it's just buildings, you know, that people don't really care too much about. We are putting humans in that building downtown. And if there's a safety issue. I have a concern with that. So more to come, you know, and I'm not upset. I just want to educate people that. Uh, there's a lot of, a lot of factors to consider and that feasibility study would have. Brought some of that to light and now we don't have that opportunity. So. Thank you.
I think it's important to realize too, that the OSHA rules don't just appear out of thin air. Those of you don't know, OSHA is one of those government agencies that actually is mandated to address. The, the safety issues that appear in the data. Right? I mean, this is an agency that just can't randomly go and makes, make, make stuff up. And so I don't, I don't know the specifics of the twenty new safety regulations or requirements, whatever. Yeah, but uh, but the reality is, is that. Firefighters, when they go to fight fires are dealing with toxic smoke that gets on their clothes. And that they take home and currently Monmouth firefighters take it home. And you can see it in the health statistics. You can see it in the cancer rates. You can see it in all the other sort of measurements for. Uh, personal safety and health. That it's not a healthy business to be a firefighter unless you are taking very seriously the precautions that OSHA is saying.
And if you want to talk about the north station, we can't even drink the water up there. It's a pee pass.
Right, so. So I hear you. You made a comment that I, I want to go back to because I would like to challenge you. Um, to a collaboration. Because I would like to invite you to help. Us, help me, I don't know, however you want to help it. But uh, to help us figure out a way to find the least costly way to store salt. And whether that's go to other communities. Uh, that have come up with. Different methods. We can pick Tony's brain. We can talk to Justin who's connected with the MMA community, but you know.
I can remember twenty years ago when we were voting on these. And I do like to go out and sort things out and I was driving by a, a state, uh, Department of Transportation. Site where they had a big pile of sand there and I pulled in, I said. Getting by with just storing the sand. They said, I said, why don't you build a building? It's, oh, those are too expensive. They'd never. Proved for us. This works fine. So I, I, I will be willing to go out and help on that. And I just want to add. The, the wise people of Monmouth voted down the, the salt and sand shed and the other building. Because they know we probably will need some money to build a fire station. And I, and I'd have, I would have to say that if there was a priority, certainly that would come before the other two. And I think if you. How about if we voted those and we had now, we're paying out, you know, a hundred thousand dollars a year for the next twenty-five years. That might have made your building a little bit more difficult to get. So I think as we set priorities.
And what you just talked about tonight, that would be nice to somehow start feeding. Feeding people this information.
Not spoon feeding.
Not spoon feeding, but feeding and letting them know. I didn't even know it was that old, you know, and I'm sure not alone. I've lived. Not spoon feeding, but feeding and letting them know, I didn't even know it was that old, you know, and I'm sure not alone, I've lived here a long time, but I don't know what year that building was, gonna start getting them prepared for, for that.
We did talk about that, that, you know, putting these two expensive things on the budget, on that warrant, uh, would maybe, uh, have an effect on what we could do in the future for the public safety.
The PFAS in the north station, you can cue Joel.
Yeah.
Here we have Joel.
Give us some good news, Joel.
Is that fair, Doug?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Water Association, some of you are not served, um, one, we are not gonna be tearing up Main Street this year. Because of the timeframe on getting materials, the project replacing the water main from Clemento Farm to Academy will be sometime in 25. The better news is we have just received notification from Senator Collins' office, that she is putting forward the recommendation that we be granted 3.555 million dollars towards the north development project. That along with what we have received previously, along with two other potential sources of revenue, should or could put us in the situation where we can take care of this PFAS situation.
Nice.
It is, when we, when we did the original engineering, which the town generously moved money for, um, we came up with a price tag of 7.2 million, put in water service and hydrants, Blaisdale to Wilton Pond and back to 202, putting up by the fire station.
And Highland, Highland Avenue.
And Highland Avenue, we have been working on this now for two years. We have two, right now we have 2.6 million of it committed of that 7.2 million dollar project.
Um, I'm not, sorry, I don't know who you are, but.
I'm the president of the Monmouth Water Association. We are going to tear up Main Street, but it's gonna be in 25.
Look forward to that.
We al, we already have the sidewalk from DOT, and the bond bank that's moving into 25 is acceptable.
And Joel can tell you that, if you have town water, there's no PFAS in it.
We already, we already are below the new guidelines that are being proposed.
So there, there are some questions that I have, Joel, and maybe you can say, I don't know, and that's fine.
Sure.
Um, uh, let me just walk through the chronology of this, we started off with $80,000 of ARPA funding that the town set aside.
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funding that the town set aside for feasibility, sort of the pre-designed stuff, um, and hiring a fundraiser. And that.
Fundraiser came after we had that initial allotment.
From.
Until we had.
A $500,000 award.
No, 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 I gotta back up, I gotta back up, let me, let me give you the agenda.
All right, go ahead, give me the chronology here.
We invested up to $100,000.
Yes.
We went out and found an engineering firm that came in at a very reasonable price. They did the stud, they did the study, they came up with the 7.2 million dollars.
Okay.
Number. We came back to the town and said, we need a fundraiser, can we use some of that hundred thousand dollars towards that? Just so happens, the person at the same engineering firm is our grant writer.
Okay, so within the hundred thousand dollars that we, as a town, the select board granted to you with the ARPA funding, uh, you've turned that into so far, uh, two point, almost 2.6 million dollars in the bank, essentially, and then another three hu, 3.5 million dollars in the pipeline. And then another.
Two million dollars.
Two million dollars, a potential two million dollars, bringing the total to a to, a total of like eight million and change. And the town is, just so that anyone who lives in North Monmouth understands why Blaisdell Hill Road is the way that it is, the town might be able to help some of the expense of that project by delaying the paving of some of the roads where this work is gonna be done, so that the final coat of paving is done by the town and not by the project, and so if they're, if they're cost overruns, and we all know what's happened with construction costs, but if they're cost overruns, then we can add a little bit to the kitty. And, and so here's my question for you. Blue skies version, all the building blocks fall into place, and we find a way to fund 99% of the project. If someone lives in North Monmouth, uh, what would their water bill be? And how would they have to be, would they have to pay to connect?
Can't answer the second question.
Okay.
Because it depends upon how the answer written and what the project costs are. Um, as far as what their rates will be, we just had to do a 50% increase for our current rateful rate payers to do this, to do this project on Main Street.
To what?
It went, the base rate is going from 47 to 68 roughly per quarter before your water, so.
The average household expense?
Yeah, so around a hundred dollars right now per quarter, so your $400 a year for taste, safe, tested water, even if you don't have power, you can turn your tap off. We do not know if we will have to do a rate increase. So we're still too far out to know what, what's been, exactly what's gonna happen. The other thing we have done with that hundred thousand dollars from the town, we have done the preliminary survey for the water mains, which makes us even closer to being shovel ready.
Gotcha.
Which my discussion with Senator Collins' office says gives us my better chance.
Hmm, I'm sure that was helpful seed money.
Hmm, thank you, Joel. I think, you?
This is the last thing, so we, I wanted to talk to you. If you have Mr. LaPlante discuss, um, the recent vote down of the salt shed and how that will affect them, and then, I think we've heard a lot about people, they're always feeling enlightened or informed, well, we have to wonder then, if maybe they weren't informed enough to know that what some of us feel is, was a real serious need for the salt shed, so, before we scrap that entirely, could we educate all ourselves a little more about why we think or thought we wanted it? Um, and with Mr. LaPlante's background, I would think he would thoroughly explain to us why we may or may not wanna pursue this again under the impeachment.
Yeah, it's, it's one of those things that, uh, we've discussed, uh, you, you know, uh, the, the shaws who are here all the time, I've heard, I've heard, uh.
I've, I've been here, I'm, I'm saying.
The DOT folks that came, talk about salt priority and what it means, and obviously watersheds sign off on it, and what it means to have salt priority.
I think we should take the vote for the salt shed in January, because that's when we get all the. Right, how come Litchfield's roads are so much better, so much cleaner than Monmouth?
What salt priority means, I mean, there, there are discussions that we've, we've had, and also, I mean, MMA did a wonderful article about salt sheds and what they cost, and how to develop them and how to come up with a plan, and it's, that was what, two months ago, that salt shed, um, article that was really, really good and complete, so.
I'd like to know a little bit more about them, when Tony here discussed it.
Yeah.
We talked about how much we were gonna save by not having to truck sand.
That's right.
And, and it was just manpower.
Exactly.
Not to say that it was gonna save us a lot of manpower of putting salt down instead of sand.
But cleaning the ditches of the sand and sweeping streets of the sand and all of the things that go along with sand.
All worked out much good for the youth girlfriend.
Exactly.
But you have to store dry.
But, exactly, the salt melts.
Okay.
Can we get that in the notes for Justin to write in here?
Tony?
Tony.
Yeah, 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 he'll, he'll be happy to come.
Oh, we're missing.
All right, can I tell them not to come on something on the agenda? I try, I try to let them all stay home if they can, these two are glutton for punishment, I guess, I don't.
They live in town, so they don't have to drive home far.
Okay, on to, uh, consider signing the agreement, uh, the, uh, the assignment of credit enhancement agreement that was approved by the select board, May 19th, 2021.
So, so, this is a, this really is a housekeeping matter, I included the minutes, this has already been done, but it wasn't done by you, so you're gonna have to do it again. But it was, it was approved, we've been operating as though it's approved, but we don't, we cannot find a signed copy of this agreement, and because we amended it, the ECD wants signed copy and they don't have one either, so, it's really trying to get you to sign it again, the original agreement is right here. So if you do decide to approve this tonight, I would ask you to just go down and cross off somebody else's name, if you were not a board member at that time, just so that we can be consistent with this is what was signed and this is what you're signing again, so the only.
Doug and I.
Doug, Doug and Chris are the only ones that were here at that time, so just pick a name that's not you and cross it out and write Mark or whatever, okay?
And, and I remember.
And the minutes are included in the packet, so you can see that this was approved at that meeting.
Yeah. I remember that.
That's Ranger dress.
Yes, 1111.
It's 1111.
1111, yeah.
Ranger.
Should you approve it, you can name the.
So, um, I make a motion to approve and sign the assignment of the credit enhancement agreement that was approved by the select board previously on May 19th, 2021.
Second.
So the motion by Chris, second by Kent to, uh, sign the, uh, credit enhancement agreement that was approved back in, uh, May 19th, 2021, all those in favor? Thank you. And next is to consider the proposed slate for the 2025 MMA Vice President and Executive Committee.
So there's a, there's a slate proposed in front of you, the, uh, there's a, there's a nominating committee, um, that interviews the candidates, and they give you a slate to pick from, the, the nominating committee's, uh, combinate, it's written in the MMA bylaws, so this year it was, the chair was Elaine Allos, which was the immediate past president of, of the MMA, which is the select board chair from the town of Solon, Lori Smith, past president, town manager, John Kennebuck, Mark Dion, elected municipal official mayor of the city of Portland, Dwayne Young, city town, city manager of, of the town manager of the town of Weston, Reece Acutia, the community-based organization, which is Quality Main, Carrie Leishman, municipal employee, supervisor of the towns of Camden and Rockport, and Jack Kluki, who is a member of the MT-CMA Board of Directors, and the, the names are on there, obviously, mine is on there, but we, we discussed this previously, so they, they've nominated me to be the vice president, so, if you are so inclined, you can vote to support my nomination, if you are so inclined.
Make a motion to approve the proposed slate of the 2025 MMA Vice President and Executive Committee.
I think.
A motion by Chris, second by Mark, who, uh, approve, approve the proposed slate for the 2025 MMA Vice President and Executive Committee, all those in favor? Thank you. Next is to consider a catering application for Krishnak Brewing Company for the Monmouth Fair.
I make a motion to approve the catering application for Krishnak at the Monmouth Fair.
I second, you're at the favor.
This is, by the way, the owner of Krishnak, one of them, lives in Monmouth.
And they've done many events at, at Compton Hall.
Yeah, yeah.
Different, different clientele.
Yes.
My concern.
Oh, yeah, maybe, maybe you should, do, do you have concerns, chief, that you wanna express or?
I just hear, I'm just hearing of this, so I, I've, I've never.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I'm being caught up in the copy.
I, I, I apologize for that.
I just have a concern with alcohol consumption at, at the fair. Um, you get a different type of clientele, client base at these separate events, Compton Hall versus a truck pull at fair, and I have one officer that works, uh, works on duty at the, at the fair, and one officer that'll be on the road, and I have my concerns about listening to this to speak publicly and openly about it.
No, absolutely, you shouldn't, I should have shared it with you, I never, it didn't cross my mind that it would be a different venue than, than like Compton, I just thought of it as, they've worked here before, so I apologize for not warning you, chief, that's my fault. I take responsibility for that, so you, we might wanna have a conversation with the chief.
The hours, I don't have to, I didn't print that on.
Do we, yes, I have the application right here.
We need to make a decision tonight on this?
I don't think, well, no, you're running out of time.
Because we're running out of time.
It's, uh, right here, do you want it, Chris?
Yeah, I just wanted to look at, and of course it'll be in a, they'll have a separate area, it's, it's drawn out here if you wanna see where it is, and, um, I'm just looking to see if they had hours on here, which I think, yeah, 3 to 9, 3 to 9, it's not all day long. But, um, the other thing is, I've been to Freiburg Fair lots of times, and they have more than one beer tent venue now, so.
But they all.
But they also have a huge.
The office.
Yes, exactly, those events.
And we have, uh, we have our flights at the fair without alcohol.
Yeah.
Let alone adding alcohol to the fire.
And, and having, uh, putting on our Compton Hall trustee hat and talking with Paul Butterfield.
I'm here with you, but what are you guys gonna do there?
Well, I mean, I, as.
You're gonna protect the kids, you're gonna put more officers on?
So, as the Compton Hall, we also oversee Compton Park and have a discuss, discussion with Paul, and the biggest part for them, I think, as the agricultural society, sorry, Phil, sorry, Paul, wrong P, Butterfield, um, they are struggling to keep that fair going, so I think that they've just looked at other, yeah, at, at other venues and, yeah, other, other avenues of.
We, we have provided security at that fair without charging the fair association for those services. If I have to start increasing my manpower up there because that, they're serving alcohol and it's gonna create a problem. I'm, I'm telling you right now, it's going to create a problem. And we're gonna have to start charging for the excess manpower that we put in there.
Question is, is this beer garden only going to happen at night or is this going to be all day?
3 to 9. Sorry, 3 to 9, I can hear the.
So that's my, that's my only concern, is that you're adding, um, some gas to the fire and, and you've got people who are gonna be, you've got people who are gonna be drinking at the truck pulls anyway, and you add that beer tent in there, and, um, I understand that the fairs are growing less and less, uh, but I don't think this is the right way to approach their shortfalls.
I make a motion to table this until a later time.
We have the dates for the fair?
Yeah.
Uh, 26 to the 29, and I think these have to be filed, what, a week ahead of time, a week ahead of time.
Starts on the 26th.
I know, I make a motion, we table this until another time.
Yeah, I'm certain.
So just a, a thought, this is something new, I think a lot of people would like to have that there, perhaps reduce the hours. Uh, I can, I can send the concerns, if it went on till nine, maybe if it was only three till six, that would be a way to try it. If it was a problem, never do it again, but I think your problems would be most likely, as they drink in towards nine, than they are towards six, maybe a consideration, to give it a try.
There, and I would've said like six to nine, because I wouldn't want my kids being there later at night, or would, but I knew the drinking started, I'd be more likely to wanna bring them home.
That's why you guys get paid the big bucks.
If it's not within your purview, you can make any adjustments to that, that you fear to do, to your license. It's your license.
Mr. LaPlante.
Yes, sir.
What if there was a requirement or contingent on the fact that the association was to cover whatever additional manpower chief thought was necessary? So they could try it out. He thinks it's two more officers or whatever it is, what if they agree to pay them? Maybe Kushnak could pay for it, or yeah, maybe, yeah, as long as it was contingent on whatever he built and saved.
My concern is. The consumption of alcohol at a family event. Is just adding, I mean, their, their, their thought is to increase the traffic flow there to improve their, their sales and increase their revenues. But at what expense are we increasing these revenues? You're gonna have the families go away and you're gonna have a bunch of drunks at the fair. I'm just laying it out on the table the way I see it, it's my opinion and. The fair is to draw families in and bring the kids in and not people who want to drink and have a good time and then holler at each other and have fights and scare the families away.
That's my point. Just that well behaved was like Mark, I just want to drink my beer, yes.
Not, not to degrade the people that attend truck pulls, but I suspect they've been drinking beer all along.
And now you're drawing a middle figure.
Do other fairs offer such a beer tent? You said the Freiburg Fair does.
Well, Freiburg does, I'm pretty sure.
It might not be that, maybe it would be a bunch of drunks fighting, maybe it would be a beer and nice.
I don't know.
Sure.
And, you know, there is a huge presence of, of people and staff and, and Freiburg is like outside of the perimeter of the fair, it's on that outskirts section, so, um.
I'm guessing that Kushnak would provide the person that would be checking IDs and leaving a gated area, kind of?
They have a whole thing that they have to do, they have to check their own IDs, they have to have their own insurance, they have to have, you know, that, that, they carry their own insurance for that, so. But. But they don't provide, you know, it's not security, it's, it's people that look at your ID and stamp your hand, so.
And it's much more controlled down at Compton when you do it, uh, when they do it down there. This is.
Well, and, and because it happens, you know, right before the show and then there's a little intermission, it's not a non-stop. Process and stuff.
All people keep coming, they keep serving people who are coming.
Get more. Well, that's the whole thing, as bartenders, they're supposed to know what they're serving.
How well that works, yeah.
I do know how well that works.
Has this motion been?
No, wait.
I'll second this motion.
Oh, I get a second. Are you all set for the tabling? You got it.
Have to vote on table again or is it just motion and a second?
Uh, no, I think we need to vote on table, tabling till, indefinite tabling. Till another time.
Well, I'm, I'm concerned with the chief's observations.
Yeah, I think.
Me too.
Uh, and it's, you know, honestly, we don't, we didn't have that discussion with Phil and, you know, definitely, it's a. It's, it's a point well taken, so.
So we can't make it, you don't want to make a decision, we're, we're just holding it, we're just tabling it.
Call the pocket veto. I put it in my pocket. Like the governor does. Oh, we did it in two thousand and four.
So all those, all those in favor of a pocketing veto?
Yes. We got three. You can be a focus, it's okay, yep.
You ever say, I'd say any?
Nope, I would vote no on table yet, I would, I would vote it.
You would, okay.
But that's okay, it's three, so that's all you.
I guess it's, yeah. And, uh, Chris?
I'm gonna sit with Mark on this one, because I, I just wish it had been talked about prior to this.
I apologize, chief, for ambushing, you know, it didn't, it didn't even come to my mind, I just thought Kushnak and they've been in town and I didn't, I'm so, I'm sorry. My fault, it's my fault.
I'm sure we did.
Well, we didn't discuss it at Compton.
So I guess we, we've, uh. It's been, uh.
Three to two, tabled.
Okay, this is a, like, it's a kind of like.
Yeah, cause that will be irrelevant afterwards.
Okay. Then on to, uh. Consider, uh, appointing David Cody to the Trails Committee. And we'll be pointing.
A second.
So the motion by Joe, second by Chris to appoint David Cody to the Trails Committee, all those in favor?
Just as an F Y I on the Trails Committee, we have, I, I think we have a tentative date for a meeting on Friday this week.
I believe that's.
And if Mr. Cody could be sworn in.
Or I'll, I'll ask Jessica to, uh, get him in there.
Well, he can come to that meeting, it's.
Right, anyway, yeah, couldn't be a problem, as long as he, as long as he's available, it shouldn't be a problem.
Right, um, there's an organizing meeting for the Trails Committee to. Get started and appoint a chair, vice chair, whatever, um, and to figure out, start figuring out our agenda of items. And it will be Friday, I don't know that we determined the location, did we? I don't think, if this room is available, we will do it here.
It should be on, okay. We have a time.
Just don't mess up.
You remember? Uh, yeah, let me find out the time.
Don't mess up the Zoom, because I'm gonna be in here on Monday. Don't unplug my TV.
I can't, I can't help you, Dave.
Well, it's fixed now, so as long as nobody, no problem comes in tonight, between now and tomorrow, so, yeah. Thank goodness.
So we're on to, uh, warrant number twenty three.
Eight AM.
Don't skip the P D, I am, I already, I already, I'm already in the doghouse of the chief, yeah.
Don't have the amended one.
On the amended.
On the amended one, it was added in.
You want a copy?
It's okay, uh, to consider an events application for the Community Night.
I make a motion, we approve the event application for the Community Night out.
That would be the perfect place to get it. Are there gonna be women, is there a?
Let's see who can get the fire truck down. It's burning.
Yeah. We will be inspecting the exhaust systems.
So I made a motion.
You made a motion.
Did somebody second that?
I'll second.
Chris made a motion and Kent seconded it to approve the application for the Community Night out, all of us in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then it's warrant number twenty three and twenty four.
I'm gonna start with twenty three, cause you didn't have it for your last meeting. Blue Rock Earthworks Materials Transport, two thousand seven hundred and seventy two dollars. Dennis K. Burke, Gas and Diesel for D P W, five thousand five hundred and eighty seven. Babyan Oil, Compton Hall Oil, one thousand seven hundred and seventy five. Thermal Industries Waste Disposal, four thousand six hundred and forty dollars. Deconstruction, uh, riprap, one thousand one hundred and eighty eight dollars. Fun login. State Main Bureau of Motor Vehicles, ten thousand one hundred and seventy nine dollars. For a total of thirty nine thousand seventy three dollars and eleven cents. Or. Blue Rock Earthworks, two thousand seven hundred and seventy two materials transport. William King. Three thousand eight hundred and forty to the engineers for the North Monmouth Water Project. Election Systems and Software, four thousand one hundred and seven dollars, that's for all the ballots, simulator machines for the election. Rochelle Consulting, our Tiff Consultant, two thousand and twenty dollars. In equalization consultants, two thousand four hundred and thirty seven, that's the assessor. Main Municipal Association, um, it's the year's worth of workers' comp payments, three thou- thirty three thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars. Main Technology Group, two thousand nine hundred and sixty five phones and I T support. Main Waste Energy, the tipping fees for the transfer station, six thousand and ninety five. Eat my own. It's going to be a big bill here that. The chief, this isn't his fault, twenty thousand one hundred and sixty nine dollars and seventy six cents for Northeast Emergency Apparatus for, what, six, seven, a whole year's worth of bills that they never billed us for or whatever.
Several months, uh, the owner, a lot of the ladder broke his. Staff and issue.
Right, so this is normal stuff, nothing unusual in this. I'm gonna just say Isabel, the comp plan consultant, I don't know how to pronounce her last name, two thousand nine hundred and twenty eight dollars. All right, three thousand four hundred and twenty dollars and. State Main Bureau of Motor Vehicles, eighteen thousand and twenty six dollars, or a grand total of a hundred and six thousand eight hundred and thirty two dollars and seventy six cents.
Motion, we approve warrant twenty three and twenty four for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four.
With the motion by Chris, second by Kent, approve warrant number twenty three, twenty four for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four.
Sorry, I got ahead of myself, I was, I was raising my hand ahead of time. I make a motion, we adjourn.